Good morning. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Budget CIP Overview Work Session on Thursday, April 22, 2001 at 9:00 a.m. Public participation in the meeting is encouraged through attendance in person, or you can watch or listen to the meeting via Channel 4 or go to LHCaz.gov/tv. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Council members Nancy Campbell here, Jim Dolan.
Present.
David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch.
Here.
Mayor Cal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Item 4 on the agenda, and what we're here for is the Budget Overview. We'll have a presentation, discussion, and potential direction to staff on the budget for fiscal year 2020, 21, year-end estimates, fiscal year '21, '22 annual budget, and the five-year capital improvement plan. Right, Ms. Olson or Mr. Knutson, I don't know who's going to start us off here?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, today is our second Budget Work Session in a series of three. So today's focus will be, the concentration will be on our capital improvement plan. And as a reminder, these are the one-time projects that we plan out for a series over the course of five years. Some of these projects will be within the general funds, some are within the different enterprise funds, such as water, or sewer, or herf, or road budget. And then the funding sources for those comes from those funds. And in some cases, the funds, the funding sources will come from grant dollars and so forth. So keep in mind, there's a lot of dollars that are moving around, and we're trying to take all those projects and all those dollars and present it to council and the public with the five-year plan that makes sense. We now have a schedule moving forward that council can take a look at these things and bank on the fact that these projects will be accomplished in the timeframe that's indicated within the plan. Now, there's budgeting factors and bidding factors and those types of, those things that can occur as far as weather delays, but for the most part, these projects will be accomplished at the time that's described here. Ms. Olson will lead the conversation. She'll do a little bit of an overview in terms of revenue expectations for this, for upcoming fiscal year as well as the existing fiscal year. And then Mr. Frostley will have some conversations about some of the projects within the CIP. The main focus will be on the projects that are in next fiscal year. So those are the ones that will be accomplished within the, within the next fiscal year. And then he'll can identify some, some projects here and there that are contained within the five-year plan. But council, you have the books in front of you, so if, and you have all the, all the projects within the book. So if we're talking about something that's not mentioned, please feel free to stop us and ask about a project, and we'll be happy to explain it. So with that, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to Ms. Olson and Mr. Frostley.
All right, thank you. Good morning. Skip right past the agenda portion. So this morning, just a reminder about the budget development. It is about a 10-month process. There have been a lot of meetings between now and the prior six months. And today, we are going to cover the CIP Budget Book in detail, as Mr. Knutson referenced. And then the operating budget book will be at your next work session that's on May 13. So just a quick look at how did we do last fiscal year? That'd be the fiscal year ending June 30 of 20. The focus, again, we've seen some of these numbers, so this will be just a quick reminder. It's, you can look at actual revenues and actual expenses. And you can see, based upon the tightening that occurred at the end of the fiscal year, we definitely had some savings related to the expenditure side. So the general fund revenues actually exceeded the expenditures by about $3.9 million due to the end-of-the-year actions taken related to the pandemic, so. For this fiscal year that we're in right now, FY '21, the revenues in the general fund are abnormally high due to not only the AZ Cares funding that we were allocated at the beginning, or at the end of last fiscal year, that were mostly carried forward into this fiscal year. That number also includes the most recent allocation that we've been notified of for the American Rescue Plan Act funding of about $6.7 million. The total funding for that is $13 million, but for the FY '21 year, we should be receiving the first half of that amount, we're hearing in May. And then 12 months from that May date, we should receive the second half of that payment. We have not included any expenditures related to the ARP or ARP funds, just because we have little to no guidance provided to us yet as to what expenditures may be eligible for the use of those funds. So this fiscal year, we're anticipating ending it much better than what we originally thought when we budgeted for those funds. In the enterprise funds, typically, if you see an expenditure category that exceeds the revenue category, that's typically due to carry-forward projects. And as a reminder, or perhaps for the people in the audience who aren't familiar, the carry-forward is a term that we often use. It reflects specific amounts that are not spent by June 30. We think they're going to be, they're in the budget, but they aren't going to be spent by June 30. So we are allowed to carry those forward into the next fiscal year so that we can expend those funds, assuming we allocated them in the budget. So we try to be as accurate as possible with the carry-forward funding, but it can cause some confusion in looking at the numbers because the timing isn't always a perfect fiscal year end date for every single revenue and expenditure. Then we take a look at the available resources. We looked at the revenues and expenditures on the prior side. This one, we take the revenues and the expenditures, and we apply their effects on the available resources for each of the funds and estimate what we believe the available resources are going to be at the end of this fiscal year. So for general fund, again, the revenues include the AZ Cares and the ARP funding. The budget stabilization reserve is excluded from those balances above. And just for informational purposes, in the general fund, we are anticipating reaching the 25% policy threshold, current policy threshold of approximately $13.3 million. Should be in the reserve by the, by June 30. We'll now take a look at some of the assumptions that we're considering as we estimate for the next fiscal year. In looking at revenues, we are constantly and consistently looking at those revenues, particularly in sales taxes, and we're adjusting those as necessary. As we have been receiving more than we budgeted, we've been adjusting our projections for next fiscal year as well as this fiscal year's ending balances. And we will continue to do that through the remainder of this year. For the general fund, again, the $13 million will have been received, we're anticipating, by June 30 of '21 in the AZ Cares and American Rescue Plan amounts indicated here, $6.4 and $6.6 million. For property taxes, staff is recommending that we hold the tax rate flat, that there be no tax rate increase. However, if there is an increase in assessed valuation, which the county has projected there will be, then the tax levy, the actual revenue we receive from property taxes, will go up a little bit. The amount that we should generate from leaving the flat tax, the rate flat, would be about $260,000. And the additional revenue that we get would be coming from new construction. We have also included in our projections what we have come to understand as the effects of some of the legislative action that will be taken. If the state, if the income tax break is provided, that will, right now, filter down to these cities, and it will reduce the amount of our state shared income tax. They don't anticipate that being applied to us until fiscal year '24, but depending on how they phase it in, ultimately, it ends up being about a $2.1 million a year loss, should that legislation go through. And then for water and wastewater funds, as you know, we've been looking at the utility rate study, and our numbers right now do reflect the utility rate study results, or those revenue impacts, slight increases for those funds for the next fiscal year.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Before we go to the expenditures, just, there's a lot of parallels on that slide that I just want to make clarifications on real, real quick. There's, through the American Rescue Funds, it's estimated Lake Havasu City is going to get around $13.2 million. The $13 million on this, this is, is the 6.4 we received from the governor in June. And then it's also half of the American Rescue Fund. So that's where that $13 million is. And then there is discussion at the state level for a flat tax. This is not additional tax in Lake Havasu City. This is mentioning that keeping our tax rate flat, which we've already discussed in previous discussions, that with that assessed value, that the increase would be $259,000. So just so, it's not an additional flat tax that would be, be going on. In addition, that's a separate conversation that's happening at the state level, which, as Ms. Olson mentioned, does have some dire consequences in subsequent budget years for revenue if that were to, to pass and be an issue. So that $13 million is from two different funds, not from the fund that we're supposed to get over a two-year period. So does everyone understand that? Okay, perfect.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Ms. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes. As for the legislative impacts on that flat tax that they're talking about, we really don't know what the outcome's going to be because we actually just got hit, the higher earners end up getting hit with an additional 2% that has had doctors and other people relocating other places. So again, to just, I know we were in a meeting yesterday, and they were saying, "Oh, we're going to lose $2 million to us." If I understand correctly, we really don't know this next year how all of this is going to turn out with the increase of the extra 2% on earners over 500,000. I thought that was the state legislations way of trying to keep the higher earners in our state. Is that true?
That's true, but that does, having the cities and towns across Arizona paying for that correction. So Prop 208 passed at the ballot box, that is, the high-wage earners. All of that money is dedicated to education funding. And so the discussion at the legislature, which obviously, anything can change at the legislature by any second. But right now, what the discussion is, is that to help correct that for those high-wage earners, that there would be a flat tax. The cost to Lake Havasu City, if that flat tax proposal were to go in, would be approximately $2.1 to $2.2 million a year. And, and so that would be a direct impact to Lake Havasu City's budget, but it may help high-wage earners within our community on a back end. But that still would not have monies for us to fund, police, fire, parks, you know, all of the things that we do.
I agree. I just think that we should probably wait until we see how this all lays out. Also, because I know that there's also some additional funding in legislation that they're talking about, some gambling funds and other things that they might be able to fill in that shortfall. So right now, our property, our taxes are doing great, and I just want to kind of focus on this instead of the potential possibility. Because I've seen, when you raise taxes too much, you can lose money, and if you, it can bounce all over the place. So I like focusing on what we have right in front of us first.
Yeah, fantastic. And so if there's any confusion, we are not projecting to increase taxes at all.
Okay, great.
So that's not part of the discussion here at all.
Perfect.
I just wanted to clarify the information on the slide.
Yeah.
Because there's lots of different pieces. But our last Budget Work Session, we gave consensus and direction to the staff that we are not interested in increasing taxes, and we won't.
That's great, because we're raining money right now.
Well, we're making a budget work. We're in day one of two sessions, so, but excellent. So back to you, Ms. Olson. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, no tax increases. I'm mentioning it because we are doing some five-year projections. So as you see from FY '24, '25, and '26, if you see any reductions in some categories, as we give you more information, you'll know what that is. So it's not impacting the FY '22 budget at all. So as we take a look at what funds will be available through looking at the revenues, we look to our existing service levels and directives by council to determine what our expenditures might be. So we'll walk through some of the variances and some of the assumptions in our budget numbers that we have projected. We've included a full-year position analysis implementation, which I believe everyone is familiar with. We're also reflecting a potential increase for salaries and wages of about 3% on the average. The position analysis implementation has about a $3.2 million increase overall, just so you understand the overall impact. And then, in addition to that, we have the increases based upon step increases, and then we do back out some money for attrition. We have received notice that we will have an increase in the retirement rates for the PSPRS, the Public Safety Retirement System. And right now, it's looking like the health insurance increase, if any, is going to be no more than about 1.5%. And we'll adjust that if needed, if that changes between now and adoption, or at least adoption of the tentative budget. We did have supplemental items requested by the departments for all funds of about $13 million. So our supplemental items are those items over and above what the base budget was. We started with a base budget that was no more than what was approved last fiscal year, removing any one-time expenditures. So the requests were, were high. Fortunately, we've been able to, to have greater revenues than what we anticipated. So you're going to be seeing some of those supplemental requests as being proposed, as approved, in this budget that the city manager brings to you when we look at the operating budgets in particular. We have included, again, we had a $1 million general fund contingency this year. We're proposing that that be $1 million next year. And in addition to that, we are including about $1 million in set aside for deferred facility maintenance issues that arise. We know that we have deferred maintenance issues. There are going to be things that pop up that we weren't anticipating. Therefore, this way, we can react and address those issues in a timely manner. And then again, as I mentioned earlier, we do project salary savings of about $540,000 in the general fund to offset those salary increases that were included above in the step increases. This concludes the kind of general overview. Greg Frostley, the Public Works Director, is going to provide the details related to the CIP. And then I'm going to provide just an overview for CIP. So we'll go back and forth here for just a couple of minutes. And then Greg will wrap it up with the CIP details.
Thank you, Jill. Mayor, members of council, good morning, and welcome to the CIP portion of this morning's presentation. Let me first say that it takes an entire team to put this CIP together. And thank to, I want to say thank you to all the employees who contributed their knowledge and department heads for their careful analysis of their operations and needs of the community. I want to have, say a special thank you to Jill, to Angie, and the staff and all departments for all their hard work in preparing and presenting this information. But especially to Jill, I think Jill is awesome.
I helped him with his notes.
Any guesses who wrote the notes on this slide? No? Okay. We'll go ahead and move forward. And as Jill indicated, I'm going to be taking the lead on the, on the slides going forward as they relate to the current CIP and the proposed CIP. However, Jill will be jumping in periodically to talk about the financials, such as the very next slide here.
Yeah. This is just a quick overview. The book that you have in front of you is the five years of projects that are being proposed. There are projects proposed for water and wastewater that are considered to be immediate needs for this coming fiscal year. And then we have reviewed the projections for revenue and fund balance and have carefully looked at the timing of all of those projects in trying to estimate what the expenditures for each of those five years would be. And then Greg is going to start with just a short recap of how, what CIP projects are actually budgeted this year, ending June 30 of '21.
Thanks, Jill. Mayor, members of council, the next two slides simply list the projects that are included in our current CIP. Before we get into the discussion on the individual projects, I would like to note just a couple of the challenges that the engineering division has faced over this past year. And they're really the same challenges as everybody has faced, which is COVID and staffing challenges. As you probably are aware, many of our projects require review and permitting through state and federal agencies, and that entire process slowed down to nearly a stop through, through this pandemic. In addition to that, and I think I mentioned this to you at the, at the retreat, that our already small engineering group was reduced by two positions over the last couple of years. So we, we're getting smaller, and the workload is growing. Having said that, I think we've done some really, really good work over this past year, and we've made some great strides with this, with this current CIP, especially with the addition of Dan Sloan in a leadership position with engineering as Assistant City Engineer. He's already made great strides to getting, getting us better organized to, to help push these, these projects out. So having said that, like I said, the, the, the list of projects is divided over two slides. So we'll just start with this one and give you a quick update on these projects. I'm not sure how much detail you want to get into. I'm going to, I'm going to give a brief update, and if anybody has any questions, please, you know, feel free to interrupt me. It will start with airport projects. There's a lot of money being allocated through state and federal grants over the next couple of years, which is really great news for us. The, the first one is, it's, the name doesn't really describe the project very well. It's really a hydrant removal and replacement project in safety areas out at the airport. We've got above-ground hydrants that the FAA says are an obstruction. So they've provided us a grant to designing and construct the removal of those and put flush-mounted fire hydrants in the safety area at the airport. That grant was delayed for some reason. I think it was the last meeting or the meeting before council actually made approval to accept that grant. So it should have been designed and constructed. In this current year, we're getting a late start due to a delay in a grant. We're getting ready to, to move on that one right now. The next two projects are design projects for some pavement. And, well, one is, I guess, erosion control of FOD abatement program. And the taxiway alpha is, was under design as well. Both those designs were complete. And the pavement project, which is an $8.4 million project, estimated paving project, that's actually out to bid right now. So we did well on those two projects. The LID master plan is going to be completed this year. Havasu Fire Wash III should have been designed and constructed this year. That one, we're getting a late start on. It's actually under contract. We, we had some delays getting our permit, and council awarded a contract to start construction a few months ago. And when we went out there, we, we found some burrowing owls. So it took a couple of months to relocate those, and we're ready to start construction on that next month. It's, it's, it's starting in the correct fiscal year, but there's going to be a large carry forward due to some, some delays, and we, we got a late start on it. The Aquatic Center HVAC, we've selected an engineer for that, negotiating a contract. That should have been all completed this year. Again, we got a little late start on that. And next year, we've got a large sum of money, $2.2 million, to make some improvements at the aquatic center. Dick's Samp Improvements, that's the pickleball courts, and we are nearly complete, and will be done by the end of next month, which is right on schedule. The fuel facility, we had $20,000 in this year's CIP to take care of the environmental permitting to remove, hold on. Yeah, the fuel facility, 20 grand. We're going through the permitting process now. We'll have a permit by the end of this fiscal year. And next year, we have money, I'll just discuss it in some future slides. But we're going to remove an underground fuel tank that's so old, we can't insure it anymore, and replace it with an above-ground tank. So we're on schedule with that one. And the police facility assessment, that's underway right now. The engineers and architects have been out to do a comprehensive evaluation of this facility, and they're writing up the report now. So that, that one will be completed by the end of the fiscal year. McCulloch Boulevard Pavement. We had put in this year's CIP $1.2 million to repave Akoma Boulevard between Smoke Tree and Akoma. And we were prepared to do that, however, with the pandemic and the challenges that those shops and restaurants were already facing with being closed, we didn't feel it was right to go in there and close down that street for a short, even a short period of time, when they were just starting to reopen. So that $1.2 million got pushed to this proposed CIP. Agent's ductile iron enforcement replacement, council just awarded a construction contract for that. And it's a very short timeframe. We should have that wrapped up by the end of the fiscal year. I don't know if anybody has any further questions on that one. And the Influen pump station surge improvements. We were having some, some, some surge issues at the Influen pump station that feeds the, the north treatment plant. And we didn't really know what the best fix was. After much evaluation, we did a, we did a semi-permanent fix to, to contain the surge, and we realized that we had the wrong pump motors on there. So it's, by replacing pump motors instead of surge tanks and other things like that, it's a better solution. It took a little engineering, so we pushed that one out to a future year. We didn't do that one this year. We just canceled it for this fiscal year. Okay, the Influen, I'm sorry, the, the island treatment plant flow equalization basin, and that's a big-ticket item. $3 million is what we had in this current fiscal year. Council just awarded a construction management contract to help us with bidding projects. We, we got done a little late in the year, and we had to add some odor control to it. So we pushed that project. We're getting ready to start, actually, July 1st. Design is complete, and we're ready to advertise for that one. And that, that, that's an important project to actually get the island treatment plant back into compliance with the permit that the state issued for us to operate it. The, let's see, the tertiary capacity at the Mulberry Treatment Plant, that, that project is complete. That was a, that project went very well, on schedule the entire time. That third fuzzy filter, we call it tertiary filtration, actually gets us to a place where we can operate that plant at its rated capacity. Before we did this project, we had a bottleneck in the treatment process, and we couldn't treat as much as, as the plant was rated for. Water conservation and reuse improvements, that project was a carry forward from the previous year. It was the project that converted London Bridge, London Bridge Beach over to effluent from potable water. So that project was completed earlier this year, closed out. And the exploratory well drilling and backup water supply, that's probably the most important project we're going to talk about today, and it's going very well. The, the well is drilled, and the casing is installed at the water treatment plant location, and the, the pump testing is complete. Just yesterday, the drill rig left the site at the, at the Public Works Maintenance Facility. So in the next coming weeks, we're going to do the pump testing on that one. All indications are that the yields are actually going to produce more water than we originally anticipated. So that's really going well. Next fiscal year, we've got, got some money to finish the design based on the yield from the pump tests, how much water we can pull out of that. They use that information to finish up their design on the pumps themselves, the electrical components, the wellhouses, the pipeline from the wells to the treatment plant. So next year, you'll see in the CIP, that money is there to finish that project. So by the end of the year, this time next year, maybe a little sooner, we'll be pumping water to the treatment plants. Real happy with the progress on that one. The tank and booster station improvements are our annual maintenance projects. If, for the new council members, we, our original water system has 13 booster stations and 26 water tanks in the system. And all of them, until we started this program a few years ago, are original, which, you know, they're as old as I am, that they're built in the 60s. So we have a lot of problems with them. We do an annual project. They're, they're expensive projects. This year, we got two tanks designed. We were delayed a little bit in the permitting. We've got one of the tanks out on the streets right now, issued to bid. We're planning on opening that project up next month. So we're going to fly right into construction on that one. So that's, that's a very, very quick overview of our current CIP. Like I said, there's only a couple of projects that we didn't actually finish or get to. They happen to be high-ticket items. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take, take them now.
Councilmember Campbell?
Mr. Frostley, thank you for this. I have been working with a broadband infrastructure specialist, Alan Cameron from Wirefree. And we're, I've been working with Councilman Dolan as well on this. And wherever we can open up and put the appropriate conduit in the ground to help with future infrastructure, what is your opinion on that? And I'm curious even about McCulloch Boulevard, as old as it is, that we just need to start assisting any way possible with the possible improvement of broadband. that we just need to start assisting any way possible with the possible improvement of broadband.
Yeah, we agree. Actually, the city manager is meeting with other providers of that service. And he and I are talking fairly regularly about just what you're saying. How can we prepare for the future to accommodate somebody coming in and giving us a reliable broadband?
Let's see, one other question I had was,
are you more interested in like the open duct banks? Are you more interested in the conduit, the 20, like whatever recommended conduit size on that?
Actually, we're not quite that far. We don't know what a provider would need coming in. But I agree with you. McCulloch is a good option for that. The plan for McCulloch is not a complete removal because it's quite costly. It's three miles, I think, and the pavement is thick. So the plan there is simply going to mill the top couple of inches off and repave it that way. But it's easily to dig a trench to install the conduit if that's what they need or may need. It's very premature at this point.
I know that city manager is also going to be talking further about this as well. So we just need to start taking care of our broadband customers and complaints for sure, any which way we can. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from any members of the council? All right, we're ready to proceed.
Before we get into the fiscal year '22 through fiscal year '26 CIP in any detail, Jill is going to go ahead and provide you with a brief overview of the CIP finances.
Thank you. Yes, as Mr. Knutson mentioned earlier, the five-year CIP plan, as it was last year, is once again being proposed to be adopted as fully funded. The construction sales tax funding source that we use to estimate the number, the amount of dollars available for general government projects, such as from the general fund, that is again proposed to be a dedicated funding stream for the general fund CIP. That number has been increased. It's been 2.2 million for the last two years, and we've increased that to 2.5 million for the upcoming budget and the budgets after that. We monitor that each year to give an indication as to whether that number should change. It will allow us to, if we monitor that, should a recession hit and the construction sales tax begins to fall through, then fewer funds are going to be available from the general fund for CIP. And then in addition, no debt has been included in anything that we're proposing in order to accomplish this plan. This is a breakdown of the five-year CIP by city services. You can tell the utility amounts, water utility and wastewater utility makes up over half of the CIP with their improvements. Airport is a big number due to the FAA grants that are received by the city for all the airport projects. Drainage projects included, and our portion of the flood control district dollars is about 2.2 million each year. Those numbers, those dollars are used in helping to fund this CIP as well. Herf is a small dollar amount. You'll see that in the streets category. And it's small here for the CIP because Herf is, right now, due to the limited funding, you know, or small amount of funding. I know that's subjective, but I would consider it a small amount of funding that we receive for streets through the taxes is primarily used for the operating budgets for the streets, just to do the annual maintenance and upkeep of the streets. And then the water fund is the biggest funding source outside of grants. So a large dollar amount for the utility projects does come from the water fund. And so now I will turn it back to Greg to take a closer look at the five-year CIP proposed.
Thank you, Joe. Mayor, members of council, the next two slides are listing the projects that we're proposing for the next year's CIP program. I can go through and highlight what's changed from last year's approved CIP for this year and maybe talk about some of the high-dollar items. The following slides actually do detail the entire five-year CIP by category. So maybe it's more appropriate to get into the details there. But it is, this slide and the next slide are the amounts in the projects that we're going to be asking the council to approve. So I think we should spend a little time at least looking at this before we get into an explanation of the five-year CIP. Some of the changes from last year are new projects. The very first one is Transit Transfer Station. That's the design of the transit hub that we're planning for the city-owned parking lot on Mesquite there by the splash pad. So that's a design contract. London Bridge Lighting is new. As you know, we're celebrating the bridge's 50-year anniversary, which means all the lighting on the bridge is also 50-year-old. And so we're looking at replacing those lights and adding some new technology that would give us some remote availability to change the colors and something with a little more pizzazz, if you will. So that's what that project is there. Of course, the municipal courthouse is new. That came out of nowhere. We have selected an architect through qualifications-based selection. We're in the process of negotiating a contract with them. And what the city manager has asked, that he meet with me and Dan Sloan, of course, and the judge this afternoon to talk about the funding for that. And so we're very close to bringing a design contract to the council on the courthouse. I mentioned earlier, the Aquatic Center is getting a new HVAC system. Basically, the pool area is so humid, it makes it miserable for the people that are not in the pool. So we're putting some new units on there to make that situation a little better. Fuel facility, Downtown Catalyst Project, we actually did interviews for an architect to do something at the Querion piece of property. So that project's moving along. We talked about the pavement a little bit. Airport hangars, we in Public Works had asked for $500,000 to do something with hangovers at the airport. We actually got it from the city manager, but it spread over two years. So this is $250,000. And really what that is, is to be prepared for something. If you ask Damon, he'll spend a good portion of his day every single day of the week talking to people who are looking for hangars. So there's a high demand for hangars, and so we're starting to explore that a little bit. Avalon Drain, Havasupai Wash, those are two projects of our regular annual maintenance wash bank stabilization program. And then again, we talked about the McCulloch pavement. The next page finishes it up. Eight-inch ductile iron force main replacement. Chip drive lift station, that's a new one. We didn't have that on last year's five-year CIP. But we're experiencing some significant issues with the electrical systems actually starting on fire every once in a while. So we're putting Band-Aids on it until we hopefully get this approved, so we can go in there and upgrade the electrical on one of our major lift stations. And again, these projects are going to be talked about in detail when we get to the five-year CIP. But what I wanted to point out is that $34.8 million price tag, that's rather large. That's unusually large, right? And it's because of what I talked about earlier with the schedule slip. If you evaluate this list, the flow equalization basin at the Island Treatment Plant is $5.3 million. $3 million of that was programmed last year, was already approved. Same with the Havasupai Wash, that's nearly another $3 million that was programmed last year. Some of the airport projects were programmed last year. So it's a high number, but we're finishing up some of the things we started the previous year. And one of the goals that Dan and I have set for the future years is to be a little more balanced and not do a $28 million, and then a $12 million, and then $6 million, and then a $30 million. So we're going to be smarter about balancing out the five-year CIP in all categories. So if we want to start with the details, this is a five-year CIP for our airport projects. The top one is the hydrant project we talked about. It's $450,000. That's a state. The grant is funded by the state. Our match is about 10%. So we have a $45,000 match for that project. The next project is really the erosion control. It's on the inside of the taxiway. That's a $500,000 project that's proposed in the CIP. Our match is about the same, $45,000 or $50,000. The next one I'm excited to talk about, that's the big taxiway payment project. It's, the entire project, design and construction shows 9.2, but the construction is actually estimated at $8.4 million. That's a federally funded grant that has been changed to require zero local match. It's 100% funded. So we're saving, prior to that, we had about a $450,000 commitment to do that project. Now today, our commitment is zero. Future years are just things that are included as priorities in the airport CIP that's been approved by ADOT. Updating our hazard markings. The runway strengthening and overlay is actually a design project that's scheduled. It's more federal money to move from repaving the taxiway to repaving, excuse me, the runway. And again, that's 100% funded through the grant. We talked a little bit about the airport hangars and the replaced runway 32 poppy. I'm told we need one of those. So a lot of money being thrown at the airport through grant projects, which is really great news. A lot of it's underway, various stages of design and construction for the next two years, this current year and next year. So if anybody has any questions on the airport?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind folks that are watching is the economic impact that the airport has for us. And you know, although there's grant funding, these are all projects that need to be done. So it's not like we're just finding a grant for the sake of grant. I mean, these are all necessary projects. And some of the runway is well beyond what the useful repair is. But that airport provides such a large economic base. You wouldn't know it if you're not a user of it or recipient of that, but the impact to our community is huge. So it's a fantastic area that can be funded primarily by grant dollars, only 8% of local tax dollars having to do these types of improvements. So.
Any other questions or comments from council before I move on?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, for that clarification. These projects were actually identified as a high priority through the process to develop the airport CIP with ADOT. And after they were identified, we went looking for the grant money, not the other way around. So thank you for that. Next on the agenda is drainage projects. As Jill mentioned, we get an annual allocation from the Mojave County Flood Control District from anywhere from $2.2 to $2.4 million. We actually have received the contract for next year's allocation, and it's $2.4 million. And we're getting that ready to bring to council in May. So we have the money available in June to do the next set of projects. And what that is, what this drainage project program is, is several years ago, we did a drainage master plan where we did a comprehensive evaluation of all our washes in town and prioritize them for repair. Because what happens, and if we have high, we haven't had this problem, but back when we used to have high rains, we tended to see erosion where the wash banks were migrating towards private property and sometimes onto private property, undermining walls and fences and those kind of things. So we put a program together to do one or two washes, certain reaches that are experiencing that erosion. The Avalon Drain was actually designed, both these washes, the top two were designed in 2019. We postponed the construction of Avalon 2 because we went after a multimillion-dollar construction grant that we, the county indicated we had a high chance of receiving, and we did, and which is unfortunate. But we put it on this year's CIP. It still needs to be constructed. Same with the Havasupai Wash, that's the one where we had some delays in our permitting, and then we ran into owls, protected burrowing owls. So we had to call in some company from Phoenix to actually remove those and relocate the owls. That Avalon Drain, the design's done, of course. We can get ready to advertise that one. The Havasupai 3 Wash is under contract, getting ready for construction right now. And then future years, the next two that we have on there are just the next on the priority list from the master plan. Every year, we try to do design or construction of at least one or two of these washes. General Government. Downtown Catalyst Project, I mentioned earlier, we just went through qualification-based selection. We interviewed two firms just earlier this week, actually. And I believe we have a meeting scheduled for Friday to get together and select which firm to move forward with negotiations to design something for us at the Querion property on McCulloch. We talked about the courthouse a little bit. That $4.7 million obviously includes the purchase of the building. And we've got a design scope of services ready to discuss with the city manager this afternoon. London Bridge Lighting, we're hoping to get some new and improved lighting on that bridge prior to the celebration, the 50-year celebration. And we talked about the Transit Transfer Station. And I think Patrick's going to be here for a work session at the next council meeting to give you an update on this project and all his projects on transit. And he'll have one of our new buses sitting in the parking lot that you can walk by when you walk from your car to the chambers.
If I may, Mr. Frostley, real quick. So the downtown project, what the thought is, is when that million dollars is the money that was won through the America's Best Community Competition process. And the intent was to have a public-private partnership. Obviously, we're public. We own the land, have some private entities. We have been successful in that arena, but it's still a widely-used public open space for our citizens. So using that money to have a park-like setting of some sort in the meantime, we're still allocating for future years if a private partner ever can come into that area. Obviously, this would be done engaging the council, the community, the ABC Committee, but we wanted to at least get them all moving forward so we can have that open conversation about what that would look like. And then the Municipal Courthouse, obviously, was in the approved CIP budget. It just moved up because of the opportunity that presented itself last year. So just a couple of comments on those items.
Mayor, I look forward to the Downtown Catalyst turning into a park of our own that we can have. When we do like Music in the Park, we've done that before. And by putting music in a park that has no bars or restaurants around it, we lose tax dollars. So I believe by starting to move it as kind of like the First Friday Events to that location could generate a lot of income for the surrounding bars and restaurants, which includes, pays all of our salaries. So that's good. Thank you.
And also quality of life for our citizens. That's the business we're in. So any other comments or questions? All right, Mr. Frostley?
Thank you again, Mayor, for that clarification. We, I think we all understand that the million dollars is a donation for the Downtown Catalyst Project, and it's going to be a multi-phase project. And this phase one is actually the catalyst for the other phases. So thank you for that. We'll move on to parks projects. There's only two. We talked about the HVAC, which is really the installation of dehumidification and installation of AC in the pool area to make it more pleasant for parents and birthday parties and that kind of thing. And that was identified as a high priority in a facility assessment we did in 2016 or 2017. We're finally getting around to be able to afford something like that. So it's in the proposed CIP for next year. And then the other project for future years is to really take that original assessment. It'll be seven or eight years old by the time we get to that year. So we're going to, there's $25,000 we're proposing just to kind of dust that off and reevaluate the needs and see what the next projects at the Aquatic Center are. I think we can all agree that that building is in dire need of some intense maintenance. Public Safety. We talked about the fuel facility project. This money you see, well, the $480,000 includes the $20,000 we spent this year for the permitting. That permit will be in place. We can start solicit bids for the removal and installation of, removal of the underground tank and install an above-ground tank, starting as soon as July is what we're hoping. And the other public safety project we have in the five-year CIP is the rebuilding of Fire Station 5. Pete put a, like a placeholder in. Station 5 is our oldest station, needs a lot of work, and I think And I think we all, we agreed that it's probably time to just rebuild the thing. It's 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 falling apart before I, so that's what those projects are. Street Projects. Once again, we have, we have one street project in the CIP. It's the McCullough McCullough Boulevard, Akoma to Smoke Tree. I think that picture is very telling, that pavement is beyond repair. There's no maintenance we can even do on it to to improve it. We're going to remove and replace it. We were going to do it last year, but like I said, we didn't want to add another negative impact to the already struggling businesses in the downtown area. So we'll, we'll come in this year and 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 repave that street. I think I think it'll be a welcome improvement. I don't know about you, when I watch those videos of all those beautiful car shows, all I see is the crack fill on the pavement. Hopefully, we can make that improvement this year.
Mr. Frosley, Councilmember Campbell.
I'm a little concerned about this budget because as you know, when we did this budget for asphalting that street at one point two million, I know for a fact our fuel costs or oil costs are just skyrocketing right now. What happens if this goes above that? How do you adjust that?
Admittedly, this budget was done a year ago, prior to the pandemic and prior to the increase in materials. Well, what happens is, this is a general fund project. We either, we actually, we either increase it through this project or we have to ask for that general fund contingency to make up the difference. That's my view.
Yeah, Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, what Mr. Frosley is correct, there's essentially my mind is two options that we could absorb the higher cost and look at funds, whether replacing with other other projects or we delay the project and wait for the the expense to go down. Those are the two options. But we'll evaluate whether it's this project or every project that we're talking about. The courthouse is another one. So the dollars contained for that courthouse construction, the cost of steel, lumber, all the construction materials, raw materials is skyrocketing. When's it going to stop? We're unsure right now, too, so we're going to have to continually kind of reassess the situation. And we'll either have to find additional funds or delay projects to to accomplish it. Those are the two options.
And yeah, I'm worried about the airport as well, just knowing what our costs are lately in asphalt is unbelievable.
I think the list of what we're worried about is not worried about is shorter than than what we are worried about. So yeah, I mean, there's a lot going on in terms of the price of raw materials right now.
Thank you. And then Mr. Frosley mentioned this, but you know, we get a lot of comments and questions from residents about streets and our roads and putting those together. And we put together the CIP for three thirty or thirty four million dollars and there's only one road project. Let's keep in mind that this is just a capital improvement road project. We still are doing our regular street maintenance program, which includes a goal of about ten percent of our roadways per year to have some sort of a treatment of some sort. So just so people watching at home, we know the streets, we understand the streets and we still focus on maintaining those. So if you want to move on to wastewater.
Mr. Mayor, a quick question.
So sorry, Councilmember Dolan.
Then are we kind of approving an unrealistic CIP budget if we're if our placeholders are way off and we're just so we're basically just talking about the items, whether we want them. But I mean, if the street comes back at two point two million or the municipal build at the courthouse comes back at six, seven hundred thousand dollars more than we're talking about and we don't have a cushion in the CIP budget, then are we just having this discussion all over again individually at every council meeting when it comes to approve it? I guess that's my biggest concern.
Mayor Shi, Councilmember Dolan, you know, essentially, we try to do our best. The engineering groups takes takes a look at the engineering estimates. We've done a really good job in the last couple of years in particular in nailing those those engineering estimates on some of these projects. But it's a moving target. I mean, if you can, if anybody can tell me what the what the economy is going to look like in six months from now, then then that would be, that'd be super helpful. But it's our snapshot of the most realistic picture of what we think will happen. Are we going to be budgeting too many funds for a project and the bids are to come in lower? That can happen and and it's going to happen on the other side as well. So we do the best we can to put together estimates based on the information we have at the time. And then we have to continually reassess, use logic and common sense to figure these things, figure these things out as as they happen. Always taking into account that we're using taxpayer dollars to to make these things happen.
I guess that's my question, have we reassessed? Is this the reassessed version as of today, we think it's going to cost one point two million or it was one point two million a year ago? So I guess that's my concern. If we're talking about this at one point two million a year ago, we know it's not one point two million. You know, we have a cost, we have a general idea that it's two million. Can we, you know, nothing against the engineering, I know it's been hard over the last year with COVID, but can we somehow re-update these numbers at least to as realistically as we think? So we have some sort of a cushion in there? I guess that's just my biggest concern is like, so we come back, if I know this isn't real and it's double this when we go to do it, well, then talking about it now is kind of brutal because it's it's not going to, you know, then we're going to have to have that. And if we don't have a cushion built in for that, then, you know, then we're going to have to start making some cuts a lot later, so.
Yeah, Mayor Shi, Councilmember Dolan, certainly, yeah, we'll, we'll evaluate this in the upcoming weeks before the next work session and before the tentative budget along with the other projects based on what we know kind of at the time. Yeah, it's it's a challenge moving forward, but we want to do the best that we can. I think one of the projects at the last council meeting, we had a sewer project for some replacement of portions of line along Highway ninety five. And we got two bids in, one was under the engineer's estimate and one was what fifty percent higher than the engineer's estimate. So we and we just don't know some of those timing of when the bids come in and and what contractors are busy and cost raw materials and those types of things, too. But certainly appreciate it, we'll continue to take a look at all these numbers and and do the best we can, so.
Councilmember Dolan, right now, on all of my jobs that I'm working with clients, as of even last week, it changed immensely with container costs alone. That I think it would probably be wise just off the top of our head to think these jobs are going to cost us at least another twenty five percent more. Worst case scenario, again, we'll get the engineered amounts and what we can do. But I think at the end, I would rather see them valued higher than trying. Any of my jobs, I always like to make sure that they're valued higher. You're never upset then in the end if you get to put money in your savings account. So that's just my recommendations. I think it's it's a target, the wall right now, it's crazy in this business.
Mayor Shi, if I could, just for a second to it, one of the other challenges with identifying a CIP with a budget amount that's that's posted on our website, which is a little bit different than the the private sector, is those budgeted dollars for those projects are available for those that are going to provide bids on on projects. So that's some of the tricky part aspect there, too. So it's, we do a really good job with the with the estimates. But I know that if a contractor is going to bid on a two million dollar project for the city, they're going to go in and look at, oh, it's two million dollars the city has to spend on this project. And for some silly reason, we get a lot of one point nine 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 million dollar bids that come in on that, too. So there's, we're trying to do our best to to minimize the cost and and lower the bids going to the contractors as well, too. So it's kind of that.
Thank you, great point at that, that's true.
On that note, I think we should drop them all by twenty five percent before we publish them.
Great point as well.
Yeah, and it's not uncommon on the CIP budget that things move, it's a very fluid five-year plan. And so with the municipal courthouse, that was in year five last year and an opportunity presented itself where it moved up as a greater priority. So it's not uncommon that dollars can be reallocated, readjusted, obviously with council approval. But that is something that is happens on a very regular basis. All right, back to Mr. Frosley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And for the record, if the council would like to increase that budget, I would not object to that.
No.
Okay, wastewater projects. Let's see, okay, the eight-inch ductile iron enforcement just just alluded to this year's project related to this. We we have a an eight-inch ductile iron enforcement that was installed when the Home Depot came in like eighteen or twenty years ago. In that line, we've had all kinds of problems with it simply because it's a very long in length and it and it has very little flow. So there's a lot of hydrogen sulfide, so we had a lot of problems with breaks. So the last couple of years, we've been sending crews out in the middle of the night trying to fix problems. So council just awarded last week or at a recent council meeting, a construction contract to go in and take care of the the real problem areas. It was at seven locations. And then this year, this coming year, we proposed another one point seven million dollar project to come in and replace the the straight line pipe in between those problem areas to just take care of the entire thing. And hopefully, we will, it should correct the problem for another fifty years where we won't have to be maintaining that line so intensely. I mentioned earlier, we're having problems with the electrical system at the chip drive lift station. That's a pretty major lift station and we've had fires out there, actually spontaneous electrical panel fires. So we need to do something with that very quickly. The island treatment plant flow equalization basin, that's that's a big ticket you see there, but three million of that was already approved in last year's budget. And that'll get us a a flow equalization basin as well as a state-of-the-art odor control system to keep the odors down. And it'll bring us back into regular compliance with our permit. So that's a, that's an important project. Those are the projects that are proposed for the next next fiscal year. Some of these other projects in in the following years are identified as needs in our master plan. So this is how we we program them. Odor control replacement, that's always important, of course, especially at Mulberry, the Mulberry Treatment Plant, it's right in the in the middle of the neighborhood. We talked earlier about the surge improvements. That's out in year twenty two, twenty three. Pond liners, we've got some tears in our ponds, so we're we're losing some of our effluent. We're going to fix that. And the Vados, the Vados wells are the injection wells at the north plant. They they need to be replaced or without, well, we've got a rotation or replacement program. So this is for Vados well number four and we're going to hopefully replace that in twenty two, twenty three. And we also have a master plan underway. So some of these projects in the next five years, like you said, is very fluid. They may change, the the master plan we're working on now may identify other projects that we're not even aware of yet. So it's water and wastewater are always very expensive. But over the course of five years, eleven and a half million dollars is, I think, is doable. Any questions on wastewater? So water projects, as you can see, we have four projects listed, that total eighteen point nine million dollars. So a lot of money going towards water. I explained our exploratory well drilling and backup water supply, that that project's going very well. We're on schedule with both design and construction, which is fantastic. Our water main replacement program, that's an annual thing where we we identify areas in our our water system that are maintenance intensive, where we have a lot of water main breaks. So we 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 package those up into a replacement program and and put a construction project out to bid. We do that, we try to do that every single year. A lot of our, a lot of our water main is still four-inch thin-walled PVC pipe or asbestos cement pipe, which is, it's not good to have in the ground. So we we try to do as much as we can every year to get current with that. In the future years, we also have identified some water treatment plant improvements, which is they've been in the master plan for a while, but other priorities come up with our aging water system. Our water plant has a lot of the equipment that's not covered and of course, the sunbeats on it. So these kind of things are those those types of improvements to cover some of the very important equipment and chemicals to try to increase the life. And the last one is again, another maintenance program that we do every year with our booster stations and tanks. Just try to replace a tank, those old steel tanks get holes in them. Our booster stations become less and less efficient over the decades they've been in service. So I think the the ten or twelve years, we were so intently focused on on the wastewater system expansion. We kind of let our water system go a little bit and we we were playing catch-up a little bit with the maintenance of our water system right now. So that is the end of the CIP. I'm happy to answer any questions before I turn it back over to Jill.
Yeah, any questions?
Again, on the water project, you have these replacements, pipe, still being mindful of dropping as much conduit as we can to that as well. Pretty pleased.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council?
All right, thank you, Mr. Frosley, I'm Ms. Olson.
So that wraps up the formal presentation for today for the twenty one, twenty two CIP in particular. Any changes that are made to this will be brought to you when we bring you the operating budgets on May thirteenth. So you'll be aware of any changes if they occur. Then on June eighth, we'll have the adoption of the tentative budget and final budget adoption scheduled for June twenty second. And then the adoption of the property tax levy occurs at the first meeting in July. That will answer any final questions.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions, comments, members of council? Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, no questions. Very well put together for a presentation to let us know what's going on with capital improvement projects. I know everybody in the city, the entire staff worked on this and we truly, truly appreciate all of your hard work. This is just one part of our budget, this is just the the improvement projects. And we talk about this all the time, about the the money that we put into maintenance and and into these different systems. And it is a lot of money. And to the other council members, comments about, well, do we really know the the dollar amount that we have? Nobody does, if we all had that crystal ball, it'd be be a wonderful thing. We have this conversation every couple of years about bids coming in under, bids coming in over, not putting enough money into this, not putting enough money into that. We can move dollars around as as they're needed, as Mr. Frosley just said. In the water treatment, we kind of put some things aside to work on wastewater. So we move things around as as needed. The big thing that I see is the fact that this, all of these are fully funded with no borrowing of dollars and no raising in taxes. And that is a big credit to you all and the job that you guys are doing in in keeping costs down. And if it costs more to to do some of these projects, then we move money from one one to another and and we'll get the projects done. It's important to the taxpayers of the city. So I just want to say thank you for the for the job that you all are doing. And everything that I've seen over the last couple of years is coming in under budget because of the way that you're doing things like the courthouse, for example. We just saw that four point eight million dollars for the courthouse total with the purchase and everything. We budgeted seven million, so that's a huge savings. And and those dollars will end up being used to to some other infrastructure. So thank you all for that and it was a very good presentation, so thank you, you guys did a good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments or thoughts from members of the council?
All right, as Ms. Olson mentioned, we'll have a subsequent hearing. I will get into more of the operating budget at a future date. And if there's no other questions or comments or thoughts from council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Koch, we are adjourned. Thank you for all your work and be kind.